Good morning, Khweemora. I'm Eleanor Spies and I am a member of this committee.
Eka malam di ngu Kanya Treza.
Engoska kulche person Molweni, bandu bakwetu. Eka malam di ngu Kanya Treza.
My name is Kanya Treza.
Di lilungu lale committee, cooperative governance and traditional affairs.
I too, I am a member of this committee.
Yabulela ku.
Thank you.
Sanbona, watabatala.
Greetings to you.
Eka madam ngu, Olaningwa kamsimango.
My name is Olaningwamsimango.
Nami ngelungu lale portfolio committee, cooperative governance and traditional affairs.
I am a member of this committee, thank you.
Eh, si fikenge ngoku kala mandina mkele, bandu basé Buffalo City, Amatole.
I welcome.
Basé Eastern Cape.
I welcome everyone here from Buffalo City and Amatole in the Eastern Cape.
Injongo sokoku basibela apa zesi.
The purpose of this day is?
Si zo mamela nina.
We are here to listen to your concerns.
Eh, ayasfuni ngakizabo. Si zoba mamela kaku tetwa, kalom teto upaga nyiswa yo mcha.
We are here to, to listen to what you have to say about this proposed bill.
Etika malayo Independent Municipal Demarcation Authority Bill.
Eka malalom teto uyilwa yo uti ngum teto ozimele yo ukunyazuswa, ukukandwa, ukwemilhaba.
Unembala na kalom teto kala paku 2017.
The, the bill has a history starting from 2017.
Usuke lakuma va e demarcation board, ezashuka shuke ne yo.
From different demarcation boards.
Ne, ngwaba, ngwaba, eves dalwa kukandwa ukwemida.
And conflicts that have been there before because by the demarcation.
Namachiala aké akó ngemida.
And cases involving demarcation.
Nazozonge gindwe zisondele apo, unga vano ngemida.
And every other issue that has to do with demarcation.
Londo kiko gelele ubasize na lom teto upaga nyiswa yo mcha.
That has led us to come up with this new proposed bill.
Lom teto ususa lo sasukulu ngango 20, ngogo, 201998.
1998. This bill will make way for the one that we had before, which was in 1998.
Eh, so si sugelakuma va si chinchum tetonje.
This is why we are here today to change this proposed bill.
Eh, ndikunsegile nana zauchama va e nubani bonen do nikaku tetwa ngukandwa ukwemida yo maspala ne what?
We want to hear from you, your views and opinions about this issue of demarcation.
Injongo espambile ge zalom teto.
The purpose for this proposed bill is?
Kukumilisela.
We want to instill?
No kuchonga injo umsebenzi namakunya.
We want to see to check the authority of this bill?
Of the Independent Municipal Demarcation Authority.
Tsufuna ukuchonga ukukusebenza kukalom tetu zimeleyo?
Kukuchonga inlela zoka ndwa ukwemida yo maspala.
The way in which the demarcation in municipalities is done.
No kandwa ukwe what?
And at the wa, at the wards as well, the demarcation of wards.
Nukumilisela kikumho la shukileyo eli zaususa e demarcation board.
And also to establish a council that will look into the demarcation board.
Ikumho egutwa kalibiza e Independent Municipal Demarcation Authority.
And that we, we will call it ikumho eli zimeleyo lo maspala.
Elo kumho ke wakona eh, masitum tetu uza opendu sinke disese sijonge.
The law will help us in looking into?
Amanja, o maspala no kutule bao.
Authorities in the municipality.
And ogokbe la na yonapina gindwe tibansana no maspala.
And every other issue that has to deal with municipalities.
Ngokfuchane.
In short?
Om teto lo upaga nyiswa yo akuzu tetati naga ku.
We will not dwell much on this proposed bill as the committee sitting here.
Kuzau tetanina.
You will have a say.
Eskale pa pambilisa palela ilizwe longe sitima kufakwe izimfonge bafuna yaba kwasupala.
We had written before that they sub, you make submissions.
Sakonda kubakwene langa kufunegasini ya mbale sizo nisabelanizi tetela ngokweni.
And we realized that was not enough. This is why we are here today in person.
Ino tetanjengezi ku okanyi imibu to zimeleyo.
You are here as individuals or you are here representing organizations?
Senoba zinkos.
It could be chiftnancy.
Senoba ngoteba.
It could be councillors.
So akomdu zau ngandoa obanga te.
Everyone is welcome to voice their opinion and views.
And eh, godwa ge si tetangokalom teto upaga nyiswa yo.
But what we will dwell on is the proposed bill.
Ningasbozine ngakizoma spal.
Please do not ask us questions about the municipality issues.
Wakona wakika zoma spal. Inkubogesi zawi landela, uongu mdu uza unikuituba.
Everyone will be given a chance.
Si zau ninigama kama azin numbers.
I will give you names in numbers. I will name you in numbers.
Ninga tatingo basia nitelela.
We are not looking down on you. This is just how we do things.
Oguesbi nina ba tringbasia basi, banga tringbasenza ngatasbas.
If, or even those who think we do not know them, we do know them.
Si zau tata bandu babeni shumi ngake.
We will take ten hands?
Eh, imezuzu mitatu mduin.
Each person is allocated three minutes.
Gamanya mazukfunega ez ndufunuze tetu, ez pambi luzbege kali.
Summarize what you want to say, but the most important things, say them first before the three mi, and three minutes ends.
Jengo bagebe ni vile, asuzu tetati nasau thola thola manangu.
For now, we will not say anything. We will note down what you have to say.
So si zausugage ngoku sitati zanja.
We will now lift up your hands for those who want to speak.
Eh, te zau nibalage u ngu number one, Fergus. Eh, kuteninda weni, number two. Landelela ne, eh, number, number three. Eh, number three, ka uzenga apo number four. Eh, number, number five. Desaya kuten, eh, number six. Kusashota four. Ay, ningadenilwe bafolise nje wena, eh, no baba iputi ilwa ngwano ngu number one. Kusashota kisanja ezzi four. Godwa ge mshamba banye bafunuke ba mamela ebakutwa. Asukulule, number one, can you speak?
It's okay.
You introduce yourself.
Thank you, Chief Person.
Engos ishala.
Chief Person, this matter is a matter that's great concern that the.
Shala, longumba obalekle yo kakulu futi othala bisayo.
That specifically clause 10, 1B.
Inga kumbi kuisolo yali ka clause 1B.
Of the proposed act, make provision for the appointment of members without proper scrutiny and evaluation by Committee of Parliament.
Inga kumbi ke apa ukweli solo yagukazundu kukubwa ukubama kunyudwe abantu ngapambi kukumba ababantu basholue.
This can lead to political abuse by the current government in, in, in control and should, should allow for, for proper scrutiny of the process of appointment and selection of candidate eh, by parliamentary committee.
Oku keshala, kuzau ukubange ndukuku baku be akonu ngenzwa kaku ulsekwazi ndukunyudwe nikwabantu lenkubon.
That is now besides the independent judge that will chair the committee.
Oku kaguka pantwa lom du uza be ekro kela le committee.
The eh, eh, personal, eh, sorry, in private business interest should also represented in the effort in appointing or nominating the members of the committee.
Namashishi.
Or the, sorry, the authority.
Namashishi na kala ke beskabi ndukuku bana wangabadakua anya kulumba.
This process should not be open for political abuse. Thank you, Chief.
Oku amje kukuti lenkubon mayi nga kachazu wangabadu bezo politiko.
Eh, ndiyabulis, godwa tabasheli ngapambili.
Greetings to the panel.
Umna ndingu Mamukiti.
I am Mamukiti.
Eh, kawate 34 timbaza.
This, from timbaza?
Di funuketaklomba we demarcation. Eh, is demarcation lena nditengba, tina is kapaze lenge nje lenge yu, er, enge korite.
I want to speak on this issue of demarcation and I feel that the demarcation process for us is not going to be good.
Paya kula wat yetu, paya kula ndawi yetu shala kuyo, sine, isne wat ez ndatu, enda wene yuwan.
In my area, we have three wards in the same area.
Londo ke is kapaze la ngendela ezzi, ezzi negative, ngo shobole nduba.
That affects us very negatively.
We, eh, 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 jengbasikle wat, kulekule enda yuwan.
As we stay in this area?
Enda yaseloxin, sipinda, sitibane kunyenelal.
We are in a township at which we think it is a township area, but also there are villages in the same area.
So ibanom pume lombike ngoku kana kukutwa izi, ndufuma nsabatina, bachele kualala seloxin sipatali services, si, si, si yakapaze leka ngendela enge korite, eh, eh, tibanasaba nbasazlali, niya lu isagela.
Then it has negative consequences as people who pay for municipal services, now we have to as well pay for the people who stay in the villages as well.
Go ku indendi, esitenga yo tinasenga bandu abachele paya, at least babeku no utwa, la timbaza itijani swangi yenze we i, i wat e yuwan. Abasazlali mbati jani swebotwa konukuze, kaku pumizi ndumse kela, kaku thwakiya kukuzi swizi ndukso, soloka style la ngendu zoluima.
Our suggestion.
Tinasayala bya uli, tinasayale loksin, so ababa se lali mbaya benefita bona, kubakaloko indio zoluima ndio zofuya zesa, abasna milhaba yofuya ti. Ngoku kana kengo kusino ketwa sodwa, sitijani swiloki shibe yotwa, ilali be yotwa, ititengba ingasenzela kaku shelo.
Our suggestion is that those from townships be allocated their own services and those from the villages be given their own allocation as well.
Number three, Engos.
Good morning, honorable members and members of the committee.
Ndiabulisakuya uongu mdu okoyo apa na kulispraba esesenga pambili.
I'd like to address specifically clause 25.
Ndikalanjem na ukujaja dula.
Pardon?
Must tell us who he is.
I am councillor Dinesh Walab and I.
Dingo tewa utenishwalab?
I'm a DA councillor of Buffalo City.
Di lilungu, DA of Buffalo City.
Thank you. Clause 25, the jurisdiction to determine categories of municipalities must only be with the minister and the MECs.
Solo yale 25 likas ndukuku bao, ukusi kuwa kwalimida, kufunegenge, oku kwenzi wangaba patiswa, nenkulu ba patiswa?
This clause usurps into the functions of national and provincial government.
Eli solo yali tetangoku sebenza kukazwe longe ngokunjalo nama pondu kuhulumente?
This goes beyond the scope of the Municipal Demarcation Authority.
Oku ke kutetindu kukubayindo enga paya kwe kunyali ka maspala.
As outlined in the opening phrase of the bill.
Nanjengoko kuka kuzwa, okoke kumtetolo uyilwa yo kuka kubulena.
I year with recommend that this entire clause 25
Ngoku ke ndipagamis ndukuku.
Must be deleted.
Wonga lomku lu, solo yale 25, likinwehnyaa.
Thank you very much, Honorable Sir.
Eh, can I suggest that eh, if you have any piece of paper, you can hand it over to that team on the other side so that it can help us to remind you.
Thank you, agreed.
Benitayla ndukuku bao, ukuba umtuno kwe banalutile ana lolungezintukatra, alise pagula tafiri namako sa etu.
Engos. Eh, number four.
Eh, madisbulisela nam.
Greetings to everyone.
Di ngu nomfundom na ndingu mshali, parawat 42.
My name is Nomfundom from Ward 42.
Eh, siyabulela na tisidi sabanda kanya singabashali, because the demarcation is trapaze la song.
Thank you for involving us as the public in this issue of demarcation as it affects all of us.
Ibingaske, singabashali, si, si ke, si, si, kunduendu lukutu kala pamba lukwenzi demarcation, kuba, iya is trapaze.
My wish is that for you as the panel to come to us before, before everything is done with the demarcation process.
I'm speaking on this clause specifically because we foresee political interference and meddling that will actually disturb what the objective of this demarcation is. Yeah, in this clause, we see that people that are holding current political office do not qualify, in other words, they are disqualified to form part of this composition. We see that it should be inserted that even those who hold, who held political office before and those who hold political party positions should be excluded from being part of this committee. The reason we say that is because we've seen in the past how politicians are recycled into government committees and then it causes problems. It's brought on our attention that there's an intent by the former Publicity Mayor. Yeah, that also intend to get, to be part of these, of this committee. And we see that this would cause a major problem since there's still a pending case and so it will be a gap open for anybody. So, cruxes include that people that held former positions be excluded from this committee. And then I will speak on clause twenty-three, subsection E. Subsection one, subsection E. Now, for what reason would an authority board want to have the same functions and powers as the minister and, and MECs of local government? The authorities should not have the same powers to conduct capacity assessment as does usurp the executive powers of national and provincial government.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, colleagues over there and to the House at large. I am Chantel. Okay, I'm Chantel King. I am the DA leader for Buffalo City and I'm also one of your colleagues, Member of Parliament in the National Assembly. Okay, the reason why we are here is to discuss the Independent Municipal Authority Bill. The word independent already is a problem. When you insert the word independent, it means somebody would act as an autonomous entity. Suggestion therefore is to delete the word independent and just have it as a municipal demarcation authority. Okay, clause forty-seven on the municipal capacity assessment. For what reason would an authority of the municipality want to do an assessment on the capacity of a municipality, which is clearly in the domain of the minister and the MECs? This is clear meddling into different spheres and sectors of governance and we ask that this section be deleted. Lastly, the composition of the board, section seven-two B, two A. Just to change the wording there, it must actually say must broadly reflect the composition of the South African society. Because then we don't only fixate on race, but we also are very much mindful of the skills and qualifications this important authority must have. This will also stop any political party from having cadre deployment tendencies and making a misuse of this committee. Nkosi.
Thank you.
Number eight.
It is very important when you are stating your opinion, you do clarify if you are supporting the bill or you are not supporting the bill. If you do not clarify if you are not supporting or supporting, we will have to spend the whole day discussing this bill. Apologies to you. We have to welcome the chiefs that... They are from the Home of Traditional Affairs. Chief Nkosi Sandile. And Prince, and Prince Jonyi. I am grateful that before I issue out my discussion, I'm in the presence of chiefs. I'm not sure if you are aware that chairperson, the three minutes, you are also including the interpreter. I don't know if you have divided the three minutes between the one who's going to be issuing out the voice or the interpreter. Let's not make a discussion out of it.
The, the reason why I'm stating this, I need, I need the house to be comfortable.
My name is Sifiso Molemani.
Constancy Office. Eh, the Sukagulawad, eh, ibinoma, maybe lapo Mamukiti.
I am from the ward that Mamukiti is coming from. She stated a lot. Ward thirty-four is faced by a lot of challenges. It's been a month I've been here. We're talking about... I said that when we are washing a baby or bathing a baby. Once we have bathed the baby. We forget to put the baby aside. We throw away the water with the baby. Do you guys hear me? My point is, before my three minutes. Section twenty-seven. I believe everyone has the document. I once went to Forte. I once led a fort.
Because I believe in that trust before you say we're supposed to, to, to approve on the bill. Funeke si understand le gala e bill, good is about what, and then the publicity ti singo bani gala.
What is demarcation? When does it happen? And when do you inform us about it? Who do you remove on this? What is the reason or the purpose? As you peruse down, you see the notification of a newspaper.
The next thing, Si Lapa, do you really think you want to represent the whole region? Do you think we need to adjust this in the publicity? The next thing, who's a twagla register, it in base was represented. Because you suppose good in the faga e reports.
Because you're supposed to be issuing reports. The time that you did not make it here. Lastly, before my three minutes. I plead as poor as we are. What Mamukiti said is very painful. You wake up today in a loction, the next thing you are under a council that is giving attention to their areas. When I speak about publicity before I take my seat. We had beautiful and sweet dreams. Because we're told that at ten o'clock we must be here.
But you started the program here noon go twelve o'clock. Nkosi, you're going to figure an hour before.
Well, as a radio presenter or television presenter, I always get on set an hour before. You disappointed us. Do not throw the baby with the water. Let us not mistake that when we are invited to events, we behave in such a manner. Everyone knows that the agenda of this meeting should be starting at twelve, or start at a twelve rather. Until four P M. So I suggest that you guys clap hands. It should not mislead this meeting. Please check the documents. They stated that we are starting at twelve. Those who have just arrived, like I see on the last row. We all agree that we are here today to hear your views. On the proposed bill.
Eh, we're Independent Municipal Demarcation Authority. Si funa izi mvozi no, jengobani lapo ngalom tet.
We want to hear your views on this proposed bill. We also want to know if you are supporting or rejecting the bill. In everything that you want to state. If you have written something, you can pass it to our colleagues on the table. The program that you are here for, here in Buffalo City. Tomorrow we will be in Kebecha. In the next week until the twenty-ninth of August. We will visit all the provinces across the country. Getting all your views. Earlier on, we said we'll take ten people for each round. Each person is given three minutes. It was also suggested that is the interpreter included in the three minutes. We all agreed that the chairperson will use i kuña lak. We are getting back to the agenda. We'd love to see more hands.
Number one, da da. Number two, number three, number four, number five. Up on number six. The city where again, uneke, ya, parret, number six. Number seven. Now, well, number eight. Over to you, number one.
My name is Kaule Zilebati. I hear what you are saying about this proposed bill? Fortunately, I have this copy of the bill, but I got it right here at the door. The gist of this would have wanted me to have more time to read the copy. I always ask myself, why is it that every now and again, we, the demarcation process must be put up? We had raised our views and opinions before, with the demarcation process, and again now this is repeating. We are seeing this whole process as indo ingenamsebinz. When we are now moved to the new area because of demarcation, now service delivery lacks. Because I had just had the copy right now at the door, I don't know if, whether there is within the document that specifically says that you will take our opinions and views and then come back with us with a feedback. We expect that as the public, when you are giving us, when we give you our submissions and proposals, we are, we are expecting that you as the panel come back to us and give a feedback. As I see the bill and have read it, it looks promising. What I want is to take the copy back home with me, read it through so that I, I am very familiar with it, so that you will come back to us and give a feedback. Your processes might have a negative impact on the public when it comes to voting. But we will support the bill if all the processes are followed. Somebody said here before that this will be followed by politicians because it only speaks to their interests. If you give us more time to peruse through it, then we will look at it intensively. I cannot say that I support or approve it because I still need more time to go through it. Thank you. As people are getting up here to speak, we will distract you a bit, so that is... Maybe because we do not want to take much longer on this process? We did not say that this proposed bill. Put together all laws or bills that talk about the demarcation. Who makes it one law or act? We have realized that this demarcation process makes, that there is no, there's stability, no stability in municipalities. There is a proposal that demarcation in municipalities must be done over ten years.
Who will start to abandon?
People will now take participation freely in issues of demarcation? Because of, because of the protests and concerns about the, of the demarcation. They have a right to appeal when things are not going their way. I have asked my colleagues here...
Eh, i kamalang, Gulu Yanda Kuku.
My name is Luanda Kuku. From ward thirteen. From Buffalo City. I wouldn't say I support or I do not support this proposed bill. Because I had just gotten the document right at the door. And I, I am just listening to what people are saying. I did not have time to go through it. But because you are talking of demarcation. In my ward thirteen, it starts from ward thirteen in Sinaripak to Mdanzane. The ward is huge? And you wouldn't walk through the ward as huge as it is? Because the ward is huge, now it makes the councillor to feel like he is God. Our request is that because the ward is huge or big, we would like you to divide it into three. What worsens the situation is that even now the houses built? Others have been finished and others, the construction is still continuing. Now that means we are putting responsibility to the councillor and that makes him big-headed. Thank you.
Number three.
Greetings to everyone here. My name is Lungile Nzelane. I am from ward eleven. Our problem is the demarcation. We call our area Italukolo even though we have two areas.
Lala, ingenmubai ngani, wad ezimbiin, ogi yesbe ta, kundima, ezitibenene mesebeenzu, na kuzindo ezko ye, funa basazlungi, sa skwazu zlungi sa.
It is a very small area, so now we have problems with so many things throughout the area.
Ogiriyazianzayo, sisebeensayo, utkeba omnye, kua baketa ba beni, sitala, kulo, lo ossebeenzayo, kulo sitipenela ku.
Even though we have two councillors, but we are using only one councillor because the one is active and the one is non-active.
Uyoyana, ndosibawala ke sildu, msele, lele, yo, ngubang, ngukusesezisebeensayo, utkeba omnye, kodwa, sinoka utkeba ababi.
And we want to resolve such issues.
Engos kakum.
Thank you.
Number four.
Disbulisale, kumkuwa mpatinkuku.
Greetings to the house at large.
Disbulisale, kubantu bonki, abazotatimakheba namshanje.
Greetings to the house at large, all protocol observed.
Oteta yo, ngupumzile Msako.
My name is Mpumzile Msako.
Ndilibomvane la se Tocha.
I am Ebomvana from Tocha.
Bekesa shanga na izolo, ndeguinda we rongo.
We met yesterday.
Ndibone ubake, mandize, glenda wifanlekleyo.
I thought I should come here.
Genkaye, indobanga bana, ndifunuki nisek banga bana, eziconsents, and nazo ziafika.
Because I want to make sure that the needs and the concerns that I have are met.
Indo ike ubake, kutika, ndibende itetizolo, nditetenda wene rongo, ilaxwe.
I was scared and skeptical that whatever issues or concerns I had yesterday may not be met.
Tabonake, wa ma ndisondele, glenda, ebekfanelban, ndegiwa sipale.
I saw it fit that I come here as I wanted from the beginning.
Ezinye ke, sesezatu, ibi indobanga bana, ndinkokele, kula ndawendiku yo.
One of the reasons I came here is because I am a leader of the community.
Ndiso ikisela ke, inleko, kubantu enmakokeleyo.
I was nervous and a bit skeptical because of the cost of the people that I'm leading.
Ngeso sesezatu, ke, ndatiman, ndiyepa, uze, nabobachabule, nobandi zauza, mnaklenda.
Because of that reason, I came there for them.
Ndingutseba ke, kua ward twenty-eight.
I am a councillor from ward twenty-eight.
Panzigoma spala Ombashen.
Under the Ombashen municipality.
Ndisa, ndisoti ke, namshanje, mvakba bede chabule.
After having heard the concerns and voices of others?
Nditi, ndisisi ku, ndiyam, ndiyamkeela, lumkulu.
As an individual, I greatly accept this bill.
Futi, ndizemisele, ukunika ituba, ukuzi, ossebeenzee, kwili tlalezayo, nditi ma gulungiswa apa na paya.
I am adamant and I'm looking forward to propose this bill.
Ndisa, ndizoni kliniseki, isa oku banga bana, abantu balawadiya, abekonyani namshanje.
I am here to also give you hundred percent assurance that people from my ward are not here today.
Kuba, ukusuka, eklocha kula wadiya, muzi, glenda wendiku yo, five hundred rand.
Because the expenses are too high, from Tocha to come here, it costs five hundred rands.
Kodwa, ukuyakula nda obesi ku yo izolo, bebe patele, hundred ten, twenty rand kwa ba.
But from where we, uh, from where we were yesterday, they only paid hundred and twenty.
Ndisa, nokuti ke, indawiya se Tocha, nomkanduli, mazibu yezipinde, zityani swe, kuba zasgezati bananga pambile.
Because of this, I am appealing that Tocha must be mixed together with, sorry, kaido npindeleputi?
Ilishwa ke.
With umkanduli.
Tocha nomkanduli.
Tocha elumkanduli.
Ilishwa ke, indobanga bana, kasi tatuasisiwa, peshakompa che, zangi, sikalelewe, nesesezatu.
Uh, it's, it is unfortunate that when we went to Ombashen, we were never informed.
Kodwa, inleko, zonasi, yakuba, zijabantu, banga tati nduweni.
But it's unfortunate that the costs are getting higher and it's so unfortunate to the ones that are poor.
Ndisa bamfuchane ke, ngeli iti.
I will be short in saying.
Nditela, zesine duwet demarcation, asondeleka kuno pa, kuti.
We appeal that the demarcation must come closer to Ombashen and Tocha.
Zesine duwesikatelewe ipoliti ki, kuba, nditetanjee, kulumte mwele demarcation, sesibonile Ombashen, otiba, bebala, ingwadi, iziti, abantu, abazu ya, komaspaala, okfuchane, kunabo, onkumkanduli nomtatu.
Because of this, we have received or we have seen letters coming from councillors that people from Kanduli will not be going to Omtatu.
Sikelasasichonge, kendi esinjalon, engos sestla.
Please look into that, thank you Chairperson.
Eh, number five. Okay. Eh, nama, disbulisale.
All protocol observed.
Ikama, nguvusumzimbokoma.
My name is Vusumzimbokoma.
Ward twenty, Mdanzane.
Ward twenty in Mdanzane.
Eh, klanaka pambili.
Chairperson.
Kutwaketwayo, ipo tle, ite demarcation, ite independent, as tet.
Ipo tlenayokanda kwe mita, ismele.
Lo ndo si ivu yeleke, kodwa ke, kaisno senseka, apa, kuma wadwe itu, lo ndo, ingabonisinjaalo, ba independent.
But to, to just share some clarity, we don't see that in our wards.
Eh, ngamafuchane mandize, ditetengala, ndausi ku yongo, kumtanzane.
Let me speak about Mdanzane.
Ngosshobo, utandwengayu.
The issue of demarcation in Mdanzane.
Ah, ymshanga pambili, ite demarcation, yu laka zile, abashali kakulu.
Ukandoga mita has greatly affected the community.
Hinchungu keleka kulu laka zogandoni, kaba shali, ingana ndu elemita.
This has created great pain to the community members because of this demarcation.
Umdanzane, washula kustenge zonza, sekwa ten, ukungapakwa apa, u eight, wa osuwa talunjalo, kibebu eight and ten.
Because of this, we are greatly divided, you'll find that there's ward eight and ten, all separated.
No, not separated. What I'm saying, u eight no ten, famba yati bana, right? Ebey wadi one.
Eight and ten is separated, but it should be all together, being it, ten and eight and ten.
Ofmanza, mshanga pambili, indoni isekshin, enane, shambi, irozi twendi, zitatu, sukonyo ward. Lo ndo itini, ikhaka saba shali, ibezumsendu banga funuwa ward.
That causes great conflict and division amongst the community members.
Shami mshanga pambili, lunu kumzegelo, ilazegaye, ipicha, yomtanzane.
To give you a clear picture of umdanzane?
Eight and ten, ywadi le, klasstela unit.
Eight and ten is a what?
Eleven and twelve, ywadi le, yotanga unit.
Eleven and twelve is a what?
Two and five, ywadi le, yotanga unit.
Two and five is a what?
One zone one, the big zone yana, ywadi one.
Ywadi one, bi yizoni kulu?
Jaro mshango njengi, utatule, upila kandoni, kubukulumente, kufaba, sifuna bukupile.
The government should really step up on this.
Sibawela ke, ngumshali ngapambili, lando, yokwaza imita, Mdanzane, wile klanzo, wifamba ililo.
We want Mdanzane to return to how it was before.
Upinde ngoku, mshanga pambili, utate, imashati, kuma kalendangani, iswele, kobakobo, kaka saba shali, wenzon.
If you continue doing that, that will also cause great division among the community members.
Utilob, kaba nusuka apa, lendo, yokcancilla, bapalile, tensile, leositke, ngendu, leo, mshanga pambili. Ifunyana, eh, liyalteni, ikhaka zandoni, abadbe South Africa, so called effect.
Like my fellow mentioned, this will further continue to bring about division among the community.
Hinchunga kulu, mshanga pambili, sika sini lile, yes.
It's so painful, I wish I could cry.
You see? Engos mshanga pambili.
Thank you Chairperson.
Eh, ayunga lile, mshaga. Eh, number six.
Eh, no, thank you very much, eh, Chairperson.
Engos kakuluslalo.
Eh, dibuli segui honourable members from parliament, dibuli senakbasha.
Dibuli say greetings to the members of the parliament and community members.
As a PCM. Eh, now, eh, mnandingu Tapelo from, eh, ward three, as other note.
Ikamalam, GuTapelo from ward three in Southernwood.
Eh, under the leadership of Ucancilla Kita, which is a PR councillor to the PCM.
Panzigwengokeleka tayba ulita.
Councillor Kita.
Leader.
Councillor Kita.
Leader.
Panu Kita ya, Kita.
Kita. Panzigwa tayba okita.
Yeah. Uprcancilla, councillor is a DA councillor.
Nguye kani.
No, thank you, eh, Chairperson. No, mnana, I, we do not, mnana, personally, I do not support this bill.
Mnangokwama, ndikasi kwa pela, lomtete iloyayo.
Particularly that, I believe that people should be left, eh, to stay where they are.
Kubandi akole, indokbana, abanma bashike, besali kwezda, babashelikuzo.
And, and, and be moved, eh, if they we, if they willing to be moved, eh, maybe demarcated, if they want to be demarcated, maybe to the open areas, but I believe that people should be demarcated according to their will.
Wa yendia kolele, indokbana, umtumakazmovele, okanya asuke kulu nda, okaktanda yena, ikutanda banya bantu.
Not at the parliament. Now.
Ayabakta inparament.
Eh, I, I want just to ask this question that, eh.
Difunukubuza, umbuzo, okuba?
This, eh, demarcation authority bill, is, is it being passed now? Isn't that this bill already existed because we saw demarcations happening in our areas? People getting moved and, eh, so meaning this bill was already in existence? Now, which means that parliament was doing illegal thing, okanyo government was doing illegal to demarcate people without the bill being passed, that's a first question.
Umbuzo, okalin, funukubonda, kukuba, ingaba lo umtetu iloyayo, ebekonana ngapambili, okanya upasiswa ngoku. Ubanga ba upasiswa ngoku, kutcho, kutcho indobana, bekungeke, kongo sentetweni, obusenziwana, gabantu ba se parament.
Okanyo kulumente.
Okanyo kulumente.
Eh, now, the second one is that, is parliament done enough to educate people about this bill? Because mnana now, mshabi, sishela apa, will know about the bill, but abantu from the ground, they don't know, by do ni let demarcation, okanya, what is this bill all about? Is parliament done enough to educate people since, eh, eh, they started this bill, eh, 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 roadshow?
Umbuzo, yesbe ni, funukubonda, kukuba, ingaba yenze, ntonina, iparamente, ukenseki, sinto kubana, abantu bayakochi swa, ngao lo umtetu iloyayo, kubandi amsheli apa na, usheli apa, ingaba uyawazina, lo umtetu iloyayo, ukuba unga ntonina.
No, thank you. Eh, my last question is, if the people do not support this bill across the, 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 the province, okanya, across the nation, does this bill take place anyway? Because we know that people will not support some of the things, but we find out, eh, eh, the parliament, okanyo government will continue doing these things without the support of the community, okanya, by the public. For an example, as a, as a, as a, as a, itals, zasehowting, people never supported that thing, but parliament and government did that, now they want to take them out because it's not working, thank you very much.
Umbuzo, okabeli, funukubonda, kukuba, ingaba, ubanga ba bandwa, aba ikasi, lo umtetu iloyayo, sa obona epasiswa kusina na, engos.
Eh, no, ma ke, amen, jega, nin, kaku kumbuzo, uyafunu pendulo, kwenze, baba landela yo, noko ba tatelewe.
Should there be any question, we would have to address the person so that there's clarity.
Kona, asuzunge, na, eh, milonyenya bantu, tabeketa, asuzunanda, city, ai, u out of order? Ayu in order? Komtunandwa yo?
We will not interject whenever a person is speaking or say that they are out of order.
Korake, kaku kumbuzo mshagelo, ingalashaga lenzu, kaku thwa, ingabubu, ngoku bu nguekolo umtetu upaga niswayo, ebuksejenziswa ndoni, ukandimita.
But should a question arise like the one that he asked, should, um, we not have any demarcation, what was happening prior?
Umtetu okoyo ngoku, gu number twenty-seven, ka nineteen ninety-eight, oteta ngokwabiwa kwe mita.
The act that we have now is the one that is talking about demarcation.
Ekokelewa ite demarcation board.
That is led by ipo tyo ukandoga mita.
Ezengaki sitetanga zo, kuzanyo lungiswa zo, nanga lo umtetu upaga niswayo.
The pro, the proposed bill is here to underline all the issues.
So ngamanyamazwi, akange ukandimita, kungekom tetu.
In other words, there was no demarcation without the law?
Ndipondeu ba manogo, mandipagamisela, lo, okusbe ni, ge, njengo basisi cho. Aba, talu tibana na lo umtetu ngoku, banelunge lolo ku ufula, paukibabenzisubmissionsavo ezipaliweyo.
Those who have just received the document have the right to go through the document and they can make their submissions.
No ba bazizi ku, no ba ba ngamakumho, atile.
They can do that as individuals or organizations?
So ngamanyamazwi, isa vuleleki le, lendo, de si komit, nanzin kubesa wilandela si komit, mvakoba ku mamela, uyoma ge twenty-nine ka august. Sisa obuya, sishale, panzinjenge komit, akazu tetala malu, ala, sichonge, izi, mfoze, nuzelizwe longe, sikot.
You have every right to air your views or make submissions until the twenty-ninth of august. What we will do as a committee, we will gather all your views and then discuss them.
MVakoba sikotele, isa upuma pe komit, inindoba, city, mvakoba, kushlo nyeluweso, sintonizpagamisela yo, city maukubele pambili, nomtetoka, nyunga kubele pambi.
After having discussed and saw your views, we will then amend a way forward on what is going to happen regarding the bill.
Kamanyamazwi, sese se kitaleni, kule nku bo, yo kwenzo umtetu.
In other words, we are still in the first process of proposing the bill.
Nnelunge lona, nukpagamisa, no ba indoni, mvakoba ufulile, ububufundi lute te apa.
You have every right to air your views after going through the document of the proposed bill.
Eh, masieke, ku number seven.
We can proceed to number seven.
Eh, disbulisale, apa, napagati.
Greetings to everyone.
Eh, na kumalu, ngwe paramente.
To members of parliament.
Eh, na kungosisi, thwa skoyo ngapagati.
To the chiftensee.
Eh, na kbasali, apa ngapagati.
And to the public at large.
Eh, lo umileyo apa, ngumkokele, ngunambi.
My name is Mkokeli Ngunambi.
Kua ward thirteen.
From ward thirteen.
Eh, under councillor Mshawli.
Under councillor Mshawli.
Eh, ebese tetile, kwa ward thirteen apa.
My colleague from ward thirteen has been here before on the stand.
Eh, esba ke, ekoshelis.
In most cases.
Eh, sisoloko sinema, kipaka ward thirteen.
We acquire problems in ward thirteen.
Akutin tu ywadi, twinteleme kaya, ngukunku kaku.
Ngokwenjela, ywadi etu, that has been designed and built, it is big.
I, 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 ngunku kaku, i, i, kwa ichonge, ichonge Tangen Village, i, i, ingalinga na Tangen Village, kodwa ywadi.
When you look at Duncan Village, it is big, but it is a ward.
So sia itela kakulu ke lendo, yenndioba, sestelu, temakaitelu apa ya, no ba inoxula katatu lawadi.
Now, we would like you to divide the ward into three because it is big.
Eh, ianfuisa ke lendo ke, shlegazwa, miteta yo iti, eh, umhlambi nisa, opinda, ni bu yey.
I am here, I'm happy to hear Chairperson that you are raising that you will come back to us as the public.
Koba kaluku lendo, astali, ku yiriza, tinaka.
Because this is not the first time we have raised these issues.
Eh, ebese yirizi, le several times, eh, Orient.
We have raised this ngapambili, eh, Orient Theatre.
Sisi ti sia itel, ndioba, ywadi ituma, esuwa shuwe.
We had the same request.
Eh, uba, le, 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 document, ipete, ainandwe, nyeyitetan, enoti, sibo pelela, ayinda ikasa, mnaba, inobi asnetisa, kupama kewati.
If there is not anything else different in this document, then I support it.
So, samuruge, eh, nanosi, di. So samurutige, eyo nandosi, ti, 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 itela kaku.
My request?
Kukubu ye, asa ipala le, ez noticei sepa, koto was telba kubu ye, siso ba itindu.
My request is that the panel, the committee comes back to us as the public with the feedback. Thank you.
Uh, number nine. Uh, thank you very much, Chairperson.
Inkosi sishalo.
Uh, the Parliamentary Portfolio Committee.
Ne committee, ye Parliament.
Inkosi asko yoka apa.
Kuingosi the chiefs.
Stakeholders, songesko yonja police.
Obatati ngakreba, I greet everyone.
Ikamalamdi Melisizwe.
My name is Melisizwe.
Two, two, Ifan.
Two, two, surname?
I'm Ward Twenty-four Councillor, here in Bafalo City Metro.
Dungutreba wa kwa Ward Twenty-four, apa ekusisla kosa se Bafalo City.
Diamba next reba samse Ward Committees, nabasha.
I am with my delegation and public.
Ukubaswa otatin ngakreba.
We are here to take part.
Kule public participation ya lomte to uiloye.
Kulombasi kuwa wanamsanjo upaga nyiswa kala lomte to.
Ndia funuku ucho mshala ngapambili, ndio kwa sialukasa, ngopelele.
We support the bill fully.
Uh, le Independent Municipal, uh, Demarcation, uh, Authority Bill.
Lomte to uiloyoyo, wokunyazi, sawuzi meleyo, koko tando kwa Mhlaba.
Sian mwenel, la ndio bana, i guidelines, zbe clear here, when it comes to figure, kule ndo ye delimitation of wards.
We would like you to be clear on the delimitation of the wards.
I criteria esenzwayo, uh, kufunaki understand, wendi imdingu council.
I, as the Councillor, need to understand the criteria.
Wazungena paye ballali.
So that the public fully understands what it talks of.
Disabendine public meeting eh, twenty-nine this month.
I will be holding a public meeting in the twenty-ninth of June.
Disa uteta, gespe indu asko yoklomte to.
I will talk about what is entailed in the bill.
Ukwenze, ndio ba kakfiki klaye shali, ndio ba sekala za, skwazu kala.
So that when the time comes for us to raise concerns, we do so.
Ward Twenty-four apa, Bafalo City, uraitwa as number one, genjal.
And Ward Twenty-one is raised, is, is rated, Twenty-four is sorry, Ward Twenty-four is rated as the poorest.
Kwa ukandu mi dia, sipauli, ndio ba siba ngamakoba tinabantu ba ngatatin dwi.
We realize that we become victims as the poor people.
Kula shlangalengi solunzwayo, sishieka, ez social challenges nazo. Kubekuli ye, eh, ngapezu, kume kwebe sikuyu.
With our problems, now they do not get to be taken, uh, looked into further.
Mandenzumseke lo shlan. E wati nyam, there is no high school, which is, there is no formal education, dimol wati.
In my ward, ayiko i high school?
There is no formal education.
Indo etenduka kuba akuko infundo, eseseko.
Kui votas, esu population ne more than ten thousand.
Kinda wo enaba voti, abanga paya kama shumi, amane ama waga.
There is no clinic.
Akuko ne kliniki.
There is no social amenities.
Azikwanenda wo esesozukulungoyo zo shala kwa bantu.
There is no access routes.
Nendela nazo zifunuku lungiswa?
I'm talking about indela as kwa zindio ba, abantu ana, abatu twasis kola transport, okanya, the ambulances, the police, as na access yongeena, the areas ka Ward Twenty-four.
Ambulances and police and all other services have no access routes.
Disbusumbuso kengoba, let demarcation, kaika anda, isebense ipi criteria.
Now, my question is, when the Demarcation Board is doing the process, what criteria is it that they are using?
No ba sele utijani swainda o epua, ne sele i well-developed.
If...
I sing it is.
This does not help us in any way, whether you put together...
Because le esee i well-developed, ishala i well-developed.
Because ezinda wasele zipulisiwa zo, nazishala kakati zipulisiwa.
So sing Ward Twenty-four, sisogole for more than twenty years.
It has been more than twenty years for us, Ward Twenty-four?
To get as services mendisbala.
Kufumana ezin ngubo, ndizi chozoska kulumende. Inkubo ezin gundoko.
As nazo tinasi sluela, umshlanezo.
We do not have the basics of services.
So ndiakela ke, ndio ba, the guidelines must be clear and the criteria esenzwayo, so that is, siti, isakala, siibane.
I request that the guidelines be clear, so that ezin ososo kwa zuguus bamaka.
Skwazu zuguus lungisalela for ipeta future.
So that we prepare ourselves for ubomi obunono?
Because klasenye na high school, singe na kliniki, singe na rolo, singe na, you next, sing Ward Twenty-four. Siza ba ipeta society njan.
Then, because if as nazo the for these services that I have mentioned before...
Kasi shelisisotwa singa bandaba under development, ngokwale demarcation. Uteno kulumende kazu snika, ez indozozostingusitu. No ba singa chinjachinje Councillors, akuneti ndo because there is no development.
Our question is, why is not the government giving us the basic needs?
So, I think let demarcation, sitetangayo ngoklomte tumcha uiloyoyo, mau kusikala sele indaose tu esesogola yo.
May this demarcation process look at our poor areas.
No pulisso.
And the development.
Di, 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 di yakaku lu gladibetetwa, onarreplasati. Ucho ngenene, ndio bana ngoku, kimi niyageli shumi, makuchonge, ndio kuba, sichinjanjan, sikandanjani na.
As the Chairperson had mentioned before.
Ungasoloka siklaye shwa each and every five years kwenzu ite demarcation, because yes, Louis alone.
I agree with the Chairperson with the ten years that he has mentioned before.
Thank you very much.
Inkosi.
Number nine, for number ten.
Uh, ndiasbulisela inslini.
Greetings to everyone in the house.
Inkosi zetu asko yoka apa.
To the Chieftainsey.
Amalu ngwe Parliament.
Members of Parliament, noshalo.
Uh, Sanco members, everyone okoyo apa.
Everyone in the house and Sanco.
Ikamalamdi Zoli Swatuswa from Ward Twenty-six.
My name is Zoli Swatuswa from Ward Twenty-six.
And suka kuilali zase Ngahuni.
I am from Ngahuni Village.
Ifubanwa lapimtansana ngapago Mount Ruth, ukushlanje apa.
If you are from here?
N six.
If you are from here, Mhtansane, it just beyond Mount Ruth?
Um, shlanga pambili.
Chairperson?
It concerns me, eh, indaba, yo shareo kwa information.
We yandikalabis, the matter of, we yandikalabis, uh, the sharing of information?
Uh, tinah, we got the invite last night, is Zolo ngabo six, about this public participation ya le bill.
Siufumenye, esesimemoti nandjokupsu kuba i Zolo.
Siufumana ku Councillor wetu na ye otu, uyufumenye ngelast minute.
From our Councillor na ye otu na wini kwenkumzuzu wakabeli.
Also, as a Ward Committee member, ka Ward Twenty-six, we have that challenge with Umaspala wetu whenever there's public participation.
Nengakike ayikali sinayo, na pauka Umaspala.
Gokusikangelegasi mediocre apa, klagunge naba, ndbeni bitopezi blue, be koti clause, be spate because they came prepared. Tinah, we like, asasdo.
We are confused because we did not have any information about this, other people knew it.
It would be nice to have information shared, even we, across, uh, you know, media platforms, WhatsApp, Facebook and every, so that we come prepared. This is not the presentation of Bafalo City.
Kunga ku, kunga ku, shenduka kuba intuka kasi ti bazalala, kumtu wonke, ngokunjalo, sifumaninuka nta na, kuban konga omnuleleluano.
Ukwenze, ba sikwazuza apa si diskashi lele bill ne communities aid.
So that we discuss the bill extensively with the public and communities.
Kula lali ndisuka ku yotwa Ngahuni, Ward Twenty-six, we have fourteen villages with one councillor.
Where I am from, Ngahuni, we have, we have forty, isne lali ez i fourteen no treba omnye.
Utreba omnye, upansko kenzelelo ngoba, funeka kushutu, shutu aneges services. Itenyi lali satisfunamance, enye ngapa iti kutena mance peka ngapa.
The, the councillor is under immense pressure because of the services that everyone wants from him and there's forty villages.
Kuyoyo, kuyoyo onke kelo ngagile, yen zalondo le, kubeko, a great division amongst the villagers, ez i four, villages ez i fourteen.
And that yenze, ndio kuba, kubeko uchutwa, kutwa ndo pakati kwa ballali.
Within the lack of services in the village of Ward Twenty-six, ez i fourteen, senoma maba destitute.
Ngokushoko treka, ke kuzi, ndoklesine ngai, kina bandaba dalla.
His service delivery is very poor and slowly, especially for abamama bangatatin dweni, the elderly people, ababantu, banyani segileyo, kafunaka votiwa, ababanga libaliyo, bati, bati sfunivile no mkontu.
Kuyakota ukuzi swakwenkonzo in these villages? Especially for those people who vote, they do not get the services, but these people do vote for you.
So indaba yeti kame yeti demarcation, ne as affected, because if forty, i village, ez i fourteen, no councillor, oh, one, that is overload of work for the councillor.
Kungumtwa lomkulu kaku lu kumtu omnyelo.
And in future, we so wish to be involved when these decisions are, are made, because we want to know who decide to go to, if village, ez i fourteen, must be ne councillor one.
Umwano wetuke ngo wokubani spanda kanya, kuzo zongezizindotani zenza, so that we get clarity on these issues.
And it would be nice, samakosa kulumende, ay kwez areas affected, ba participate, ba bene debate suchin, na bantu who are affected in those areas.
And we would love that the committee members do come to the public so that they hear from this, for themselves these issues.
And lastly, sia itela, as always, kulumende, wasole kesi ti sia buya, sia buya, sekene buu ye nyani, la ni buya, ni buu ye, nispatele, indo, no kwez House Police, mna covering, yonge no detetayo, I don't accept this bill.
And lastly, may you, because you as the committee members, you always promise to come back and you never do that, I do not support the bill.
Uh, seseza uko ba, ge, ndio ba, nicho, kasi kibe apa.
We are going to continue?
Gu maneke, ba kunde funeka, uzkat, kisukwenze, ba, bata balandela yo. Uh, bayasi, sesive ne, ndo zagutu ba. Kubeko na ugunga, mikoko nbeleluano kaku shle.
There are things that we need to clarify, we have noted that there has been no communication, proper communication.
Sa ti ke, sian itela, kani pindele makaya, ah, obana lonaki, bayo ifunda le document.
Our request is that when you go back home, take the document with you and read it through.
Ba dibani sinto kona banyi.
Discuss it.
Bauke ba basenzelimbaleluano.
And then give us your submissions.
Isa unikwa, isko kelo sokuti, singa palelapi.
And that will lead us to ta, to giving you the feedback.
Wendi senzela ke, uba, kwa wabebeko, kwa baba fika yo, siza wipinda state.
I just wanted to make clarity on that.
Uh, abantu abali shu.
We will now take other ten people?
Uh, niye nipagamisiza, ndi nini kama kama.
May you raise your hands?
Uh, apa konene, nungu number one, ngabe sawsisa kenga pambi. Ube ngu number two mama, ezangapambi. Number three, ubeso, yes, ibesa ngapambi, number four, uzengapambi, number five, uzengapambi, number six, kaba ngenva. Number seven, ngue, number eight, ibe ngue, number nine, pa ekone. Disena sistube sinye, somdu. Number ten, Masia.
Mandy Bulise.
Greetings to everyone.
Kubasheka za, banga pambili. Na kubantu abasu zima sa.
Greetings to the public and to the panel.
Lomshanga. Simbulileke umtiali, ngoba alivesa, ilthu ba kutjala silitanazela.
We thank God for giving us this opportunity that we have been long praying for.
Ikamalamdi usimpiwemzini.
My name is Usimpiwemzini.
Kwalo ngutumlanjanso obese.
My claim name is Umuutumlanjanawo obese.
Diswa kwa Ward Twenty-two.
From Ward Twenty-two?
Under Councillor Boyi.
Panzi kotreba opoi?
Uh, Ward Twenty-two ke zilali.
Ward Twenty-two consists of villages.
Panzi, kuingosi Amanjambre.
Pa, under the prince of Amanjambre?
Ah, shlanganisi. Jankashela.
Ankashelindi ndo.
Uh, basheka za, bam, elituba kutjala silitfuna.
We have been longing for this opportunity.
Ngoba let demarcation, yenze ndo ba, esizu esinyama, sichonga ne kakubi.
Because this process of demarcation has caused rift between the black communities.
Sizilali ez isisken.
We are seven villages.
Ya fika demarcation.
And then came demarcation.
Sazi, ward ezin dat.
And then we were reduced to three wards.
Besi gumnocho village?
Mno ilali ya gumnocho.
Ukona Councillor Osuka from Ward Twenty-three.
There's a councillor from Ward Twenty-three?
Oti akana si kolon.
Who says there is no school in the area?
Oti akana kliniki.
And clinics?
Uza ku Ward Twenty-two abantu baake.
Then now those people from that ward go to Ward Twenty-two for services.
Sine main road eh, ye, egravel.
Our main road is just one, which is egravel?
Panzi, we ward ezin dat.
Under three wards.
Ka utreba omnye efuna ukwenze wa injela.
When one councillor wants the construction of roads?
Ukubandi bino kwenza umzegelo.
An example?
Lo Councillor unesi two villages, umama, nosisi.
When the one councillor who is overseeing two villages?
Ukulumende uza otiplo treba yotela, enzela for half, koto wa main road.
Then now government will only give services or construction to the just those two.
It demarcation yenze ndo ba sosulwe, je, itela.
Now the demarcation were just divided by the road or street.
His service delivery, ez kape next door, ayiko apa ikalen kwama.
Now only one side, the other side of the road receives service delivery and not the other.
I kliniki yetu i ye.
We have just one clinic.
Yolondo esiti lotreba Osuka apa, i kliniki yetu iseva, banbaka Ward Forty-five, Ward Twenty-three and Ward Twenty-two.
As that my colleague who was here before, had mentioned before, that the clinic serves three wards.
Ka besiza, i kliniki nyengoba ise Ward Twenty-two, bayalo abasuka, Ward Forty-five, no Ward Twenty-three, besiti, ilapa kubo i clinic.
And now this causes a problem with the public.
Abakwas ba ngobokala, abaswa kwez sinye, i wati.
They now...
Kale apa.
They, the people from where the clinic is, the area where the clinic is, now those people say they should be served first before the others from the other wards.
Kumchonike lo owenzwa, it demarcation.
That is the certainic process of the demarcation.
Sia itela ke, siza unitanazela.
We will pray for this.
Ukuba obu nyani kuhulumende wetu, kubeko na.
We will pray for honesty in the government.
Koto wa kelo onge lendo, ipo sakele, ekukalini.
But this has not been done properly from the word go.
Di kumbula, ka utiko kupama Israel, kwa faro.
Nkayuki bao.
Wati, ambani nazo zonke, i resources, zenu.
Now, when God sent the Israel, he said he must take all their resources with them.
Baye elizwe, ni elbaleka, ubusi na mas.
They must go to the world of the wealthy?
Imba za moyetu ke, sitia kautwa sikululekile, ezindu, i resources zetu ba, bamiyama, zese paya kwa faro.
Now, our mistake was leaving our resources at faro.
Disile, eti demarcation, sia itela, naze ndio kuba, i voti zetu, asi voti, ndio ba, nisitune zele, njengo faro, inkosi.
Thank you, we are not voting for them.
Number two.
Mandy Bulise, eh, Minje.
Greetings.
Sele, Tibulise kuingosi zetu.
Greetings to our chiefs.
Tibulise kumalu ngwe Parliament.
Greetings to the members of the Parliament.
Tibulise nabasha libon.
Greetings to all the community members gathered here.
Ikamalamdi, Jungu Yunis Banjwa.
My name is Yolisa Banjwa.
Yunis Banjwa. Ishala eh, Ward Forty, Forty-nine.
I am from Ward Forty-nine.
Pansko Councillor Unkala.
Under Utreba Unkala.
Ilali ami Ndeva.
My village is Ndevana.
In Ndeva namshlezi, ipakati kwe ward ezin datu. Ward Twenty-five, ward Forty, ward Forty-five.
Ndevana is in, is in three... Ndevana is in, is in three different wards. Because of the divisions of these wards, we really believe and hope that this bill will bring great contribution to our ward. On this particular, in this particular year, a portion of one of our wards was taken. We, we also believe that we might have land on ward forty, we believe that this bill may bring assistance and clarity to that. Wa kona, ikona i portion, enge nilayo apa uti, ka ward forty-five. Snabantu betu, abavota i ward forty-nine, kotoa, bavela, kenyeme, beku ward forty-five. Because of these geographical issues, we have people from ward forty-nine voting. We think that they are from our ward but not, so we believe that this demarcation bill will bring great assistance. As ward forty-nine, we really hope and believe that with all this discussion, we'll get a report on way forward. Thank you.
Number three?
Greetings. My name is Toza Mampekele, from ward? Our greatest wish as ward thirteen, as our fellows have stated, the challenges that we face, is that we have the demarcation, especially differentiated into three. Ka ward thirteen is, is Nabantu abasuka espunzane, abaninda, abanomshaba opaya kutka ward thirteen. We have over two hundred, two thousand five hundred wards under our ward. We are in great need of this proposed bill and as it will bring great contribution, as I have mentioned earlier that we have more than two thousand five hundred people that are building houses, now we have over one thousand five hundred people who also want to build their houses in our ward. Because of this, we also have to spend about twenty rennes of taxi fare if we need services from the councillor. Ngos. We are from far-flung areas and because of that, our clinics are far, so it's really hard to get service delivery. I cannot say I am supporting or opposing the bill for now, we really hope that when you are issuing out these bills, you contact first and you visit our areas. I need to clarify? There is a, there is a difference between us as a committee and the demarcation board. Ikamale, tukutwa we are the portfolio committee, i committee, portfolio. As I am hearing your views, all of you are complaining about the state of your wards. Some are saying that there should be demarcation, some are opposing that. Some are saying that they should add more wards, some are saying that there should be demarcation. Here we are discussing the proposed bill, which will be amended in September. The demarcation board is still existing. We also had the same encounter, the very voices or concerns that you have, they were also stated in Mthata yesterday. We said we have jotted them down? We'll pass the message to the demarcation board. We said that you guys want the demarcation board so that it comes and addresses you in pertaining the wards. To everyone who has raised, to everyone who has been raising concerns with their wards, we will tell the demarcation board that you guys want it to be addressed. So I'm just preparing and alerting everyone who's going to have their voices. We are in the pla, in the parliament, so please don't make any noise. I am from ward sixteen, under Uteba Kal. I'm grateful for this opportunity, I will touch on the demarcation.
I will be sang, ikamala, ko, panza sa palavidi Methodist Church.
Lindisilema Gama is my name.
Ward sixteen?
Ward sixteen. We support the bill. So that we can voice our concerns on something that is existing. The truth is, we do face challenges in our community.
Paratwa ward five and ward sixteen.
Between ward five and ward sixteen. That's all from me, thank you. Greetings to the portfolio, to the parliament portfolio? And everyone here in this hall. My name is Sandilem Kwashile. My claim name is? Ala ala? It's my third time attending such bills. I've just forgotten the departments that I visited. I don't know if it's a fashion from the parliament that you alert us late about these proposed bills so that you make an excuse. I'm saying this because? I only heard yesterday that I'm supposed to be here. I only have this document, I have no idea what is written here. Maybe I will peruse it when I'm at home. I don't know whether I'm supporting or not supporting because I have no idea what's in this document. I share the same sentiments with Uteba because what he mentioned here, I do agree that whenever you propose bills, you must inform people so that they have clarity on why you are having these bills. I did mention that I'm from ward twenty-two?
Ward twenty-two is, 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 is urban, is semi-urban and rural.
How then do you expect the councillor to deliver services if we have such concerns? The people from rural areas, semi-urban and urban and all these different wards, they encounter different challenges.
Pa we ITP, yes, umaya made mention of the fact that tukuzawakiwa iolo, lo waye newsevendinamtanzan.
We have a great problem with infrastructure and roads, just recently we are attended an ITP and that was addressed.
Umbo negi, ukeba ke, kla ebonwa ngama, ekita, ezaro ngama, gepa, ache, kuma gustua ku yasfeela nganda wa ietu, utkala ngoba, ni kati decente, ndebitira ba ke gustua gepa.
In this way, the norm of this demarcation will split people and will cause great division. I wish that it comes to the people on the ground, give them clarity on what it's all about. I'm grateful Chair for giving me the platform to freely express myself, thank you.
Number six?
Greetings to the panel, greetings to the community members present inside. My name is Ulwandi Sambofu, I'm representing the Economic Freedom Fighters, from ward twenty-two. Chaperson? The demarcation of wards in municipal councils is crucial for the sustenance of democracy in the country. Section five, section one five five, clause three of the constitution requires? Requires that an institution dealing with demarcation issues must be completely independent so as not to allow narrow political interests? Interest to influence decision on demarcation. We are broadly in support of an independent authority tasked with this function. Our contribution here is to ensure that there are no loopholes in the bill that would endanger the independence of the independent demarcation board. Clause then outlines the process of the appointment of the selection panel of the board. We submit that the process must be handled by parliament and not left only to the selection panel that is appointed by the minister. For a more open and accountable process. For a more open and accountable process.
Ukuzo lenkobo, i kuazukatu kanduva, ifuti ivuleleke kuiye wongubani?
Parliament is the most suitable institution.
I palamente ye iyoyo, na ikufaneleyo kwenza lento?
To conduct the selection process for the appointment of the board members.
Ukuzi kuazu kulau lenkobo, yoketa wakanyoko jula?
Not, not a selection panel appointed by a minister.
Ay, isikreba es sonyulwe ngumpati swa.
Clause 25.
Isolo ya le 25.
Of the bill provides that the board can only make a determination on whether or not municipality ought to be categorized as a category.
Likaza indoko kuba ipo di inka kuazinje, uku paula ngokuba oma spala ibenga babakazu yo, ukushela, ukundoko kuba ngukatagori eyu kutkusini na oma spala lo, mvako tetwano kunya nompati swa.
This leaves decisions about such important issues only to politicians.
Long to kitetindoko kubizikri bo ezin jezba lekle yo, zia uwenziwa ngabezo politiko.
We want to argue that there must be a peremptory requirement for a constitution with civil society.
Si funu kota ngale indoko kuba malibekoni, isolo ya le likaza indoba makubekonutetwano kunya nabantu nukhlala.
And community structures before a decision of this nature is made.
Ngapami gokatuwa kwe sikreba.
Further, for the determination of the status of a municipality.
Ukan, dukpeka pami lukaza ngokwesimo, oma spala lo, woba masimiso lokuso?
The bill provides that when a determination is made as to what category, a municipality falls.
Ukan, di lo mte tu ilua yo, kaza indoko kuba ukushela o, koko oma spala, ngokuba bakubeku pantse kolu pi esimo?
That determination can be revisited only after 10 years.
O, kungapino kujonge mvakuemi nyakeli shumi.
The board ought to be empowered to revise the status of a municipality based on a number of variable factors, including key performances.
Ipo dike ine kunya lokuba i jongi zinduze zilezo kwenza oko?
Indicators for certain categories of municipalities.
Ukujongi mibe tileleyo yoma spala.
On clause 27.
Kusolo ya le 27.
Which makes provisions for consultation for determination of municipal boundaries.
Ne likaza ngoketwano o lukanyalo le midan?
We submit that there be provisions for oral engagement.
Si paga misindoko kuba kubekonutetwana?
And submission by members of the community.
Ngokunjalo abashali bafakisindululo zabo, ngokutetana?
Limiting the form of submission to merely written formats which may include, exclude a large number of our people.
Si pelisengele, ndokubizindulule ibeyimba leluwa, ndoleyo ye yenza bantaba ninzi ba ngakuazu, ukubane ngakreba.
Clause 35 of the bill must not only consider the number of voters per ward.
Ukan, di isolo ya le 35, la lo mte tu ilua yo, malinga jonginje kupela inani labantaba vota yo, kuiwa dilleyo.
Particularly in the context of rural areas.
Inka kumbikuindawe zema pangeni?
Where the population is sparse.
Na lapo ka ba, uninziwa abashali, lukona?
Clumping villages that are far apart from each other.
Ukutibani si lali ezuku ezikalele neyo?
In two single words, hinders representation and delivery of service.
Ukrapaza lakaku lu na kakubi ukuzi swenkonzo eluntuini.
I thank you for the opportunity.
Ndiya bulela.
Eh, number seven.
Mandisbulisele nam, galinjikalanga.
A greetings to everyone here this afternoon.
Mbapati betu basa parliament.
To our parliamentary leaders, the chieftaincy, and the public at large.
Mandi ikalelu polo, bao, uba, sisa uteta ngate makeshin. Kaloko tinas kuchwe di, di ngon tutuzelo, wa kwa kelele.
My name is Nontutuzelo Kenene.
Eh, Kelele.
Kelele.
Yes, eh, Ward 3.
Wa Ward 3?
Tina si kalelewe, masi kui makeshin.
We were only told that we should go to a demarcation meeting?
Endesa ikalela kasi kuchwa sisi swa kunda u, di kala, nibaka itesele otayba ndi Ward komite, kubantaba tal.
Uh, now I will request to you that when these processes, you are handling these processes, please talk to the councillors first.
Si takisele basi ya pisizotini.
Clarify to them where we are going, what, and then what are we going to do there?
Okay, ndisa ungena ke kulekutwa, kwa okalela ite makeshin port, di fuisai landaba ya palaba za, bayasi pizela ilo demarcation port.
I am very happy to see that you are scribbling notes up there.
Tina pakuwa lakalale tuka Ward 3.
In my area, Ward 3?
I, i, ite makeshini, yasbetaka kulu.
We have a huge problem with the demarcation process.
Mandenze umzekelo, kulevuti okabela.
Let me make an example with the previous election.
I, i, area yetu, inaki swa yochona Hudson Park.
Now, our area has been extended to Hudson Park.
Kubenzi ma ke kuti, singa sile balaba si ochesanzi, izi bete ifuti, singa pumi songke okuyai Hudson Park.
And now it makes things difficult for our race to go all the way to Hudson Park.
Kubaka logo i areas change.
Because now the areas have been changed.
So, di funu kuti ke, tabesenzisitishi, mabanga sitati bossbeka kui balala, elinga zoza kuti kasbanita.
Now, what my request is, when you do these processes, do not put us in areas where there is a race that will not consider us.
Mandenze umzekelo, we meetings etu zokhlala.
Our, our, in our meetings, public meetings?
Ezibizwa ngokcila.
That the councillor calls?
Ababiko, ababantu, ba lenilbala. So, and ya zindo ba, ino babo nabatela antoni pi, kalungselelu antoni, esingayaseo.
The other races do not come to our meetings. And now my question is, where do they request for service delivery and other issues?
Di pinenditi gen gugu, payo kshaleni, si asitela na timosi R D P houses.
In our area, we also request R D P houses.
Utwe kuti i business zone.
But we are.
Okay, i business zone eseli abashali abavota.
Now, we are told that it is the business zone that stays with the voters.
Indeske yenze, ke gen gugu, bakiwaye i flats, ekuzuza ono wangu.
Now, what we see, there is a construction of flats and the only people who benefit from there are the rich ones.
Okay, ndisa opela gen gugu, kobe kuli chelu indoba, sitesa kule age, imke la inkamkam si badala, si lili paya, asilungseleluwa, si shaliswa gen gugu, klasiteli ndauzolala, uwenziwe i flats, esingazo zafota, ukuzi badala tinenda.
And now, they forget about us, the old people. They build, they construct flats that us, the old people, won't be able to stay in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Eh, number eight.
Moloenba shala ngapambili.
Greetings to the panel.
Kani no, apa balape olui.
And the public.
Sitengo singo kusakue no apa.
Thank you for this opportunity.
I puma, ku Ward 22.
I am from Ward 22.
Di ngu Michael, kona kona.
My name is Michael.
And in the bank bases, apa, ishabo isijwanga, he cost, he kon, kutsa gotwa, indore ite makeshin sakomba eke, kuzalu.
We were ve.
Wanda ndumvila utado.
We were very happy to hear that you are coming here because we've been having problems with demarcation.
Tumvila utado ta esidi, abasalanga lo, ndobo na apa, kota kabasakmatela.
I heard you chairperson when you said that is not what you came here for, but you will take the information to your leaders.
Gen bantikapela njaba, ndumvila, Ward 22, ubemnijnjika kulu, likaleba, kunzi ma aposuka kono.
As you have seen, there has a lot of members from Ward 22, which then shows you that we really have serious challenges.
Si pantse kota ba, uboi.
Under the councillor boy?
And kunzi ma mchaka swa, ndiatela mon, senizi ambisi esindoko lomdu ete makeshin, and before, before, funega sitalelo, sizo kuwa basi zesi kulesi pete yonge.
May you please, I plead with you. May you please take this whole information that we have given you to your leaders and then you come back with the feedback to us.
Diya bulela ngoba kukuina wengos.
Thank you.
Eh, aspindegescha elele, eh, isreba, sokabelanga okti si kaulenje, isindomchamba zimbalo.
We will now take the last round.
Eh, mchamba bafige late.
For those who came in late.
Eh, sikota apa ngomteto opaganyiswayo.
We are here to discuss the bill that is proposed.
Okutwa ikamala ongu, Independent Municipal Demarcation Appeal Authority.
Ikamala olomte tu paganyiswayo, umte to ozimeleyo, we kunya lokupa ganyiswa okotandoa kwe mi da.
Si kapela ba, abantu, abanyebati, eh, asikorati.
We have noted that people say they are not ready.
And bako anabeza, bepetama pepa, bayafuunda.
We have seen people come with their notes.
Bonakalaba, bonaba, prepare shi.
Those ones have been, have prepared.
Kodake sithe o, onkumtu, siyani kulula, niyowi lungisale, ndo nilfu ndela pepe.
Everyone.
Nespalet.
You can take the document with you, go home with it and read it through, then you make your submissions.
Nan zke indes, eh, esimbalo, kwa kona siskapela.
A few things we have noticed.
Kuko aba bukalaza, indona sebe mki lengo, abati, inka abalo independent. Utetu independent nyani.
There are people questioning the independency.
Law independent, eh, eh, demarcation authority bill, bakola umka pantse go independent.
Inka ba ke, kuo abo bandiba tandabuza yongala, omkele kamaliti ukuzimela kwa lo mte to.
Ela kamalitatu kumka kosi seko, welis.
That the name has been taken from the constitution.
Law independent. Eh, funu kinesegisai indoba ngoko mka, elikumhuli za kwa kewa, kufuna ibelikumhuli zimeleyo.
And then the constitution, constitution wants to assure that it is really indeed independent.
Kodake, banos fundela naani, je bantisicho, korande nzelba bandubange mki apa, beikokela lendo alo independent.
Take it home with you.
Inka velikumhaliza uzimela kwa klenyani.
Take it home with you and read it through thoroughly.
Nzelba geni zitetele, ninga teteluanga ba, okwesbini, kakutwa umminister.
When we talk of umpati swa?
Oh, M E C of Cooperative Governance.
Okanyi illu ngulehulumento, ukutsebenzo swano kahulumento?
Akuko mdukusa se i minister, okanyi, eh, i M E C. Baba sispumo solo nyulu. So ngamanyamazu, funa kase zumte to, singa uenzi kuba, si funa, ukukacha, usbanban, kuba simas. Nasenzu mte to, kuba sisi ti, i minister, esiyazu ba, isa ba i outcome yolo nyulu.
We should now make i minister as the person who will be elected in elections.
Ngamanyamazu, ba napagumka kosi seko.
In the constitution?
Bako anabantu kutoa ngu minister.
There are ministers.
Bako anabantu kutoa ngu M E C.
Bako na abantaba ngamalu ngakomiti.
Abanikwe ama kunya ngumka kosi seko.
Who have been given authority by the constitution.
Nzelba gena kasikota, siyazu ba senza, umte to apa, geni minu nga sa kuiye ni paate pete.
We are now talking about the law.
Kodumka koo uti, andinipenduleke, indona ndi akwisa nje, juva sisa utata, esnyeziteti apa komdu kutwe magapendule, apa kuti si amamela.
This is not a response to why we are gathered here?
Sisa utata gen gugu, kwa kona izanle zilishu. Eh, lamchaka zebesi ti, eh, bektuza kala ngote, that bektuza kala ngoto twelve, siyo mangoo fo. Sisa mu feza elotinga gen gugu, izanla kwa kona ezilishu.
The last round?
Ungu number one, apa ngmfu. Ubengo number two, number three, number three utata. Uwe namchaka, yes, uwe number four. Venchi onga ke kwele kala. Sao ya kaka kupelizanda, siteki ay, sibanigile, eh, abantu kate tabonke. Eh, lamalu ngu asetawa kameke, ati, eh, noba utetanga, use indoda. So ngamanyamazu, ada kunyansa, lega ngutete, kwa ungekondo, funeguitete, gena number one.
Mandi bulise, kungu keli songe.
Greetings to the House at large.
Ndongo kolileka siziili.
Ikamalam, gokolile siziili.
Ndipuma pa eh, Ward 24.
I am from Ward 24.
Eh, ndi, ndi, timandingene nam, kulepili ete makeshin. Inde ndizoyimela apa, ndizomela la ward in di sukaku yo, kutoa Ward 24.
I'm here to stand before Ward 24 to represent rather.
Eh, i ward efastika kulu, enelali.
A ward that is full of villages.
Eh, la ward is kuayo, i ward apepa falositi, eh, i ward ba ruanchenge wardi, ekutondo eli, eyona wardi, ekutondo eli pezo, ngoko kutepeka.
It is the highest rate when it comes to poverty.
I ward kereana enelali, kunzi ma kula ward is kuayo.
We have so many challenges with villages.
Asina zinjeela klawa.
We do not have roads in that ward.
Injele ngurwe sina yo payana, kutoa injela ika province. I pohtoles ba zizi bath, okanyi zizi, zizi swimming pools.
The potholes that we have, they are like swimming pools.
Eyona ndogendimeleyo apa, lawa ti yotifastika kulu enelali, eh, ebesi bawele ba beksenseka. Kulekomiti, ibelokutwa kususwe, indawi asenkonkweni, ngobikufuchane no Ward 45.
As I have mentioned earlier that we have so many rural areas, we really wish that the demarcation be applied so that we have divisions on those rural areas.
So that u cantsela walawati akwazi, ati kaa ebe kizindo zake kumaspaala, si kuazukfumana, eh, iservice delivery, ngenjele iyio, ngoba ngoku si kakenene indo klawa. Asina kliniki, asina kukuminje klawa ti etu sikuyo.
This will bring great assistance to our councillor when he is appealing to Utayba so that we have service delivery.
Si akteela ke kli komiti, ngokomwe no, sinenjo, ngosobala wardi, ngai wardi nokpucha. Si teela foot ingange zelo alawati ezinye areas, because si kucherwe, i unit ekutwa eniu fifteen, enevitie ezimbi ni ezunkulu. Still, safagewa enye i vitie, si sesebtoa ibeni na ngoku, di funu kuti ke kli komiti, sitalo sa etu si teela, ingangezwa alawati, koka kususwe, le vitie asenkonkweni, ikufuchane no Ward 45. Si sheke, nelali ekutwa umsinzi, kunya no ngamkuwa.
I do wish and express my greatest wish to you as the parliament that we should not have any wards that should be included. Instead, demarcation should be applied.
Eyona ndogendu funu kuitetandi, kala kli komiti, speti sere lo mia les, wengos.
That's all I wanted to say. Please pass my message. Thank you.
Eh, number two.
Thank you Chair.
Oko kala mandi bulise, kuu mchla ngapambili, eh, nesabasake songe.
Greetings to the committee.
Tibulise na kobashali bonke abakoe.
And to all the community members gathered here.
Mnandi ngu Amanda Mkhalisa.
My name is Amanda Mkuaisa.
Mkhalisa.
Mkhalisa.
From Ward 26.
From Ward 26.
Ina hunipantse ko councillor mondemveni.
Enga hunipansiko councila mondemfeni.
Under councillor.
Mondemfeni.
Mondemfeni.
Napansiko inkosi yaman tlambé u chief mtslanganisi.
Under chief of the tlambé klen, mtslanganisi, chief mtslanganisi.
Eh, okokala mtsalanga pambili, ndisakala ndikubulele, kakulu ukutatwa, kuongo bozase parlamente, zisondezwe na ngakumbi kobaxal.
Firstly, I would love to express my gratitude to you as a chairperson that you came here today to hear our views as a community.
Eh, ndisa uti mtsalanga pambili, ndibulela kakulu, nanginga krisoyako, malunga nese pakamiso, sokwenzi wa koto andolimita, which is the demarcation authority bill.
Thank you so much, Chairperson, for your clarity on the bill, the proposed bill rather.
Eh, mtsalanga pambili, mnandi funa unuti, kasekukotwi ngo September, kwavunyilwa nangayu lipili, ndinomueno indoba na ingaske, kupindi kwenzo ngolshabo yinzwe ngalo. Kupindu kubuye kuzwe, baxalini, kuzokhazwa, indlela ekuvunyilu nengayu, nindlela ekzautukukwuchwe ngayi.
My other wish Chair is that when you have amended the bill in September, as you have done it during this proposed bill, you come back to us as a community to give a report.
Eh, oguesbini, ndi pakamiso indoba na ndiyekasa, esispakamiso soku, soku, soku andolimita, nditringa, indoyukubana, iyoo ezakuza nimindulozazo songe ezindo zithesa tetwa apa namxlanje. Ezisa uti kwa, kwa, kwa ni kakanjenjalo, zize nisombulu lozazo songe ezimakisbegoyu apa ngamaxla.
Secondly Chair, I do support the bill and I greatly believe that all the challenges or rather the concerns that the community members have raised here. This proposed bill will bring about change and solutions and all the answers that we seek for as community.
Ndisa uti eh, ndinencho ngo, ngakumbi na ngakumbi, kwenzela ekukomunicatwa ngayu izindo, zifikelele ngituba kobaxalibonke. Konukuzi naboba teba ngakwazukpumela apa namxlanje, bazookwazu u expressanaboi zimbozabo.
My other wish is that the communication, especially when it comes to proposing bills, if you have any event, please do let us know in time. So that anyone who does not make it, it's not because they were alerted in short notice.
Tiabulela kakul, ingos.
Thank you.
Eh, number three.
Hello.
Molweni.
Greetings to everyone here present and special greetings to the members of parliament.
Tibulise kuwo, umtwe lapa ingakumbi amalunga parlamente.
Yeah, and thank you for the opportunity to, to address you.
Tiabulela kakulunge lchuma ndilfumene.
Uh, we note that this bill was tabled on the twenty-second of June, twenty twenty-two.
Siakon, ndidokbana loomtetu ilwayo, uyewapa, luangetu entika June.
It's taken over here to get to this stage.
Kutatwe unyaka wonge ubasfikele kwele nganaba.
You would have debated this bill in parliament, to the committees and so on.
Nyena ikovula longo, e parlamente na makosa ashukileyo.
And our representatives would have actually debated it and, and, and taken to con, our concerns into account.
Nabana basameleyo, bayeba ikovula, kwayeke ba tabata nezindo, esingachindokbana zizimboze etu.
This bill is in alignment with the constitution, as we understand.
Ngogo konda kwe tu siakon, ndidokbana loomtetu ilwayo, uyiamisela na loomkako seko.
And I think the, the, it would have been debated at length in parliament and parliamentary committee.
Siakon, ndidokbana mtsalbe, uba ibi kovula lenngo, ibiza uambisana, ibeende e parlamente.
What should have happened at this stage, it should be asking for objections to the bill, this is what we found, what are your objections to the bill?
Eyona anto efanelbiyenze kango, kukuba umtunomtu aveze unuvula, kuba kutene ngamisani jenayo umtetu oilwayo.
There ought to have been a presentation on that, on the bill itself and all its aspects, so that we coming here will better understand what's contained in the bill.
Indo etike bekmeleba ekaleni wonge umtu uyewa takisela, waba neuluanzlo ba, lepili, okanyi loomtetu ilwayo, ukula tentoni na.
Now, the demarcation board would have been elected currently in place in terms of the legislation in, in, eh, in operation.
Ngoko ke, yona ipoti yokutando akwemita, bekmele na yewiyaziva ezizimbozina so.
Yeah, I have seen demarcation happen in my area, in ward thirty-seven, uh, did I mention, on ward thirty-seven, uh, under councillor and chairperson.
Dye ndabona ngesole nyama, kulo i ward entikuyo, uksenzeka, ukutando akwemita.
When we began local government broadly, it began with the non-strategy component and the, and the strategy component during the negotiation period.
Getu baka loku sulungisela la okavoto, oko siyasabona kutubeka.
King Williamstown, the area I come from broadly in ward thirty-seven, had five wards, the CBD area had five wards.
Kule ndawandi suka kuyo eh King Williamstown, singachindokbana sine ward ezintano.
And I've seen changes happen from, from election to election, before elections there were demarcations, redemarcations happening.
Kwayeke, kule miyaka mislanu, kutalan ndibona ukutukutuko klinda wu.
Now, I'm not going to go into that history, but what is of, is of concern right now is that there is been a proposal to re-demarcate eh, the outer boundaries of King Williamstown, of, 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 of the BCM.
Kodwa ke, indwenka, yonkalis, elkala bisayo, enisa utetanga yonamxlanje kukuba kuya kwa bakona ukutando akwemita.
And in that process, ward thirty-seven is, is, is greatly affected.
Kwayeke, kuyo yonge longo kutubeka, yuntingachindokbana ward thirty-seven utkaphazeleke kanobo.
The entire CBD area businesses and factories are, are proposed to be moved towards Tupyeti.
Amashishi ni endingachindokbana akokui dolopi, kuya kwanyanzeleka, okanyo kyanyanzeleka, indokbana asuswe klinda wakuyo, asiwe epe.
That is outside the metro, outside BCM.
Longo ke, itindokbana ingapanda kumaspala use dolopin.
This is not the only ward affected, ward thirty-nine is also affected in the same way.
Kwan e ward thirty-nine, utkaphazeleke ngalendelela ndichoyo.
Now, the guidelines for eh, municipal boundary demarcation is specified in chapter thirteen, part one.
Imikatko ke siseko, okanyi imikatko ngubo, iyeyabe iyala luchwa kulo eli pepe.
Now, it doesn't appear to be that the demarcation board took this into consideration.
Okokiya kati indokbana, yona ipoti yokutando akwemita zange ibe kanti itata ingale longa lomba.
But it's published it anyway.
Kodwa ke, ipali we nanzi.
And now people have to object.
Now, abantu kunyanzeleka, indokba betetili.
It's creating a lot of discontent in the area I come from.
Lendo yenzi indokbana babaye abaziva ngam.
It's as if the government doesn't know what it's doing.
Ingachi njenohulumente akayasi lendoyenza yo.
But I'm sure, I think eh, the demarc, to the process, the demarcation board will hear the objections.
Kodwa ke, ndinetemindokbana ipoti yokutando akwemita, isa ovaisimbozoluntu.
And make a finding.
Kwayeke, kubekoninkube la pambili.
But here comes a question about independence.
Umbozo ngakuneyo ngulo wopa, ewo kuzmela.
I think, I don't know if it's defined in, in the, in the act.
And as nokba itatwe ngaa apa kuyo umtetu?
Who is independent?
Kubano zimeleyo.
How does it impact on governance?
Ingaba, oko gunafuteli pikuhulumente.
Eh, in the summary, it talks about eh, the relevant matters in this case, regional planning, development and municipal planning.
Apa ke iteta ngo puchiso kulwa maspala?
Now, the planning, the demarcation should be on land use, what, how to best use, make use of land use.
Inkubo bekmele iteta no kubasingenza njani ukupiswa umxaba.
But I'm perhaps introducing something different, new.
Tambi, nabandi tetan gendwenta apa kun.
But demarcation is an important aspect for voting.
Kodwa ke, ndingachindokbana ukutando akwemita, indewa balikliye yoku zindozo voto.
And what happens is that readers get shifted from one ward to another ward.
Indwenke yenze ka, kukuba, kukuba konukutukutuka kwezi wards.
In order to keep the, 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 the voting population consistent throughout the wards.
Ukuzi, insekisindokbana aba voti batekolo basheli.
But it should not affect the economy of the, of the, of the municipality or the area concerned.
Kodwa oko, akufuneka kuba kusibeku sishohi so kwezo, kosho, ingakumbi kaukwa kujoska maspala.
We will, I think, read the document in greater detail and make a submission.
Ndisa ufunda ngakumbi ngayyo leto tumente, ndibendine ngayu peleleyo.
Uh, thank you.
Ingos.
Eh, ubaba ke agasko delangba umban, ay maganga bui, ya utatwa pa ikamala.
You, you didn't introduce your name?
I'm sorry, eh, it's, it's Pat Niker.
Ikamalam, go Pet Niker.
Alright. Eh, mandi, tatile ngaklayba eh, ngonyela, ekokele esispeba sisa suka kwenzi wiso umtetu kazo longe, ndibulise.
Greetings to the House at large.
Ndbulise nengosike ezomtonya, ameznga bazikona panga pagati.
Greetings to the traditional leaders.
Masino tulelumwazi ke mtsalanga pambili, ngokusbona galise, indoba na ingulule kuyapi la kuli zolomzanzafrika, kubane tatin kubo zeparlamente, nisise kutinjenge abantu nabemi.
We are grateful to you as the committee for bringing this to us on the ground, it shows that democracy is alive in South Africa.
Now, nazige zinbesifunuku niklobi sangazo.
We want to bring you clarification on this.
Eh, yinkolelo ye tu indoba na, kuzo zombie nizindu zowiso umtetu, kwezka bas, eh, skanzwe longe, nese pond, nomaspa lomba, bazikoni offices of public participation.
We do have offices of public participation and that it is our belief.
And we would appreciate ukuba ngakwenzabenziswano manla ukfunisabantu, ngen datu ngaklayba kuongo bozohulumento. Ukwenzela indoba na, singasbonisikle meko yoba abantu batenge fankabaza kuongo bozo kwa biwa akwemita.
Would greatly ap- appreciate that you give public the opportunity so that they can learn more about this proposed bill.
Ngakuheke uba ongundo klasisi apa bene information ekwele, tete dukute kikoni indokwene kilungisiwe, siabulela ke slalo ngoba, kuyaknowledge lelongo.
This calls for invitation so that everyone who comes here is having knowledge on what is happening on the bill.
Masitsho ke slalo indoba na, eh, ingubo zetemarcation board as it stands currently, zizo eziesbange lisangwe, kubantu be wardezo shukele yo njembaksenzeka nalapa namxlanje noktla wamnusukapa echilo.
The process of the demarcation board, they greatly create division among the communities.
Because u yonga aziba, eh, what is the rationale that was followed in coming to certain conclusions with regard to demarcating and eh, redetermining areas within the wards?
Kuba uye unayazi, ingubo ekmeluba iyalandela, ukunsekisindokbana ukutando akwemita kuyenzeka.
Eh, siakolelo ke uba loomtetu uzmela yoku ilwayo ngoku, uzaku snedi sa ukpele sa ezinyezezo ngaykisisfumanayi.
We do hope that this independent act will bring about solutions to the challenges that we are facing.
Ndi suka paku lamtlaba ke wasekon, mnakwesteke se dolop, ward thirty-seven.
I am from ward thirty-seven, ekonme.
Beke kwa koki sangwe apa kusitwa kukoinwe ilwayo yoba kutatwe ekon, anjenge dolop, nese babsizayo, iyutijani swanepeti.
There was a case that ekonme and its town will be mixed with Peddie.
Kodwa ke siayazu, ba ayoya lapakule portfolio committee leyo sautinisha nanayo, kwa uzai demarcation board.
But we are aware that this is not coming from you as a, as a, as a committee, but from the demarcation board.
Kuneziloge esis kapelayo mtsalanga pambili, apa estumbas yasnetis.
We have taken note of some of the things stated here that will bring a great contribution to us.
Eh, one of them, immigration eh, ye, ye, certain parts from the municipal structures act to this bill.
Anya yazo ke singachindokbana immigration.
Isasneti sa ke ngogo luvolu itukuba, kumokomaspale sina abo kuko, aba meli, abasu kumi butwe shukele yo, injongo za boke asbiinye, taitati weke, eziskuana kuana zo umtetu zasiwa, klo umtetu mchau ilwayo, nitumba, yenyenyendelea lungi salonga.
This will bring about solutions to the problems that we have, especially concerning municipalities.
Siakolelo ke mtsalanga pambili, uba ingube balikliye yole yoba biwa akwemita eh, kuba kufune kitpatwe ke ngobo nono.
We do believe that the demarcation process is very important and that it should be treated fairly.
Iya contributor ta ke greatly to i democracy, ndando yesnins, ibaleke leka kulu, indoba abantu ba manye, loba ba funandoni, ba kobe.
It's very important that you always speak to the public so that you are greatly aware on what they want, so that we have a way forward.
Nditumbasi, siya usapota ke kwaye swamke la loomtetu ilwayo ngoba, bonakalozas neti sa kakulu.
In that, we do support the proposed bill and we believe that it will bring a great assistance.
Sabanga asbin, ingos.
Ingos, thank you.
Eh, number five.
Eh, ingos, mtsalanga pambili.
Thank you Chair.
Eh, ikamalam, ndigos, siyabonga wakwachombo.
My name is siyabonga Chombo.
Komagwa eh new seventeen, abamtansani, ward twenty-two.
I am from ward twenty-two, M Tantani.
Sa uzamake, uko sebin sa isingis, kwenze banzo tkensekisindoba na eh, ivakala komdu onke, kubande ekon indoba na eh, broadcastwe eh, kuzu elonge, kubwe ramshanj.
I will try to use English so that everyone can hear me and that all the national broadcasters, the message it can get across.
Okay, Chairperson, eh, the demarcation of wards and municipal eh councils is crucial for the sustenance of democracy in the country.
Ukutando akwemita, kubaleke kakulu, kunkulele koyesiwe.
Section one five five, eh, subsection three of the constitution requires that an institution dealing with demarcation issue, with demarcation issues must be completely independent. So as not to allow narrow political interests eh, to influence decisions on demarcation.
Kitan delelo elindilfundalo, liyakha zamshopinto yokbana, funike ube kanti uzimele, kunga biko oso politika bazawani futhe.
We are broadly in support of an independent authority tasked with this function. Our contribution here is to ensure that there are no loopholes in the bill that would endanger the independence of independent demarcation board.
Ungeneleleloe, tukukunsekisindokbana, agukonalipina ifute elinolileyo, okanyi, elinokmela nalueliange, nalushuka nisapagati, loomtetu ilwayo.
Clause ten outlines the process of the, of the appointment of the selection panel of the board. We submit that this process must be handled with parliament, by parliament, and not left only to a selection panel that is appointed by the minister.
Isolo yale shu, milikha zamshopinto yokbana, funike kubekanti abakato abasimeleyo ba tongwe iyoo e parlamente.
For a more open and accountable process, parliament is the most suitable institution to conduct the selection process of the appointment of the board members, not a selection panel appointed by a minister.
Kumele kanti abantu abakatwa yo, abaketi weyo ba ketwa nguye e parlamente, kuba yona, kuya bonakali indokbana ikunyazisewe, ai abapatiswa.
Clause twenty-five eh, two of the bill provides that the board can only make a determination on whether or not a municipality ought to be categorized as a category A municipality after consultation with the M E C and the minister.
Isolo yale liyakha zamshopinto yokbana, ungenelelo lukamaspala na, lo funike lube kanti luchongo ngasony.
This leaves decisions about such an important issue only to politicians. We want to argue that there must be a peremptory requirement for consultation with civil society and community structures before a decision of this nature is made.
Longo yenza, indokbana osolo politiko bazitatela be bodwa ezikibo, indosifuna yoku kuba, bakuma ne, okanyi bakakamshela na nati siloluntu, ukuzi kubekanti kupuma undopela.
Eh, further, for the determination of the status of a municipality, the bill provides that when a determination is made, as to what category a municipality falls, that determination can be revisited only after ten years, this is too long a period. And instead of including the number of years, the board ought to be empowered to revise the status of a municipality based on a number of verifiable factors, including key performance indicators for certain categories of municipalities.
Iminyaka eli shu mimite kakulu kaga kanti kuzao pononongwa, funike upononongo kuchongwe indokbana, ingaba umkako utubanjani, kulapo ke banganga ngenelela, bakwazi indokbana benze uchinja.
Only, oh, sorry, on clause twenty-seven, which makes provisions for consultation for determination of municipal boundaries, we submit that there be provisions for oral engagement and submission by members of the community. Limiting the form of submission to merely written formats may exclude a large number of our people. Clause, clause 35 of the bill must not only consider the number of voters per ward, particularly in the context of rural areas where the population is sparse. Clamping villages that are far apart from each other into a single ward hinders representation and delivery of services. Number six.
My name is Tetele Toba. This is Bulisa. Um, Chairperson.
Let me take this opportunity to greet the Chairperson. I must first express my gratitude that you came to the people to have this public hearing.
Uh, sometimes we get confused, uh, it's demarcation. I was going to read what that speaker was writing too. But because of time. I'm not going to read it. Uh, my name is Bongani. Mlumbi.
Mlumbi.
From Ward 20.
This is Ward 20.
Do you want committee member at Ward 20? Um, senior challenge. Ward 20, let me take a, take a, uh, demarcation.
We didn't know what to do.
But hopefully, uh, that problem is sorted.
We have branches in high school.
We have branches in high school. Uh, it's called Dalukolo. Uh, it was shakes before. Uh, Ward 20, Ward 6, Ward 7, and the portion of Ward 8.
It was different portions of wards? There was a conflict?
And Ward 6 is Ward 20. So now after what Q is in, you can go pay and go call council. Go go, they were cutted as Ward 11. Ward 11 is Ward 5 opposite Ward 6.
The conflict arose because of these different wards that are placed.
So as you ask, because.
Houses are built in that area.
And the contractor, yeah, conducted it.
The contractor contacted us. The contractor did not inform the councillor from Ward 11. But they called themselves Ward 11. Some did their things on Ward 11. Others in Ward 30.
Because it, it, it was shocking to us because we were not notified about Ward 11. Even that councillor said Ward 11, nobody meetings, there's hostile there.
Ward New Seven is in a clinic. It's under Ward Twenty.
We have a clinic under Ward Twenty?
Again, Ward Eight, it's Ward Twenty.
Again, the clinic, it's Ward Twenty.
It's confusing. Because we had a meeting in a private supply clinic.
We also had to host another meeting on a different clinic.
So we don't know what is happening exactly. As you ask.
As you ask, we don't know. We have a rank for office in another ward which is Ward Twenty. The other rank office is also said to be under Ward Twenty.
So that, this is confusing to us. We don't know what is happening exactly.
We really wish that the new board gives us a role. It's conflict. It's, it's even a struggle that we don't know what is happening. If you have a problem in another clinic.
Now, but Ward Forty-eight, but here, but a clinic, so we don't know what's happening. Can you please help us on that one? I thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, number seven.
Thank you for this opportunity. I greet everyone here. I greet you Chairperson. My name is Bongi Wema Kila from Ward Ten in Scenery Park.
Also a member of EFF.
I am a member of Economic Freedom Fighters. May I take this opportunity to read right through the document?
Chairperson, the demarcation of the wards and municipal councils is critical for the sentences of the democrats in the country. Section fifty-five three of the constitution requested that institution dealing with the democratic issue must be completely independent as not allow narrow political interest to the influence of the decision of the demarcation.
Can you section one fifty-five?
We broadly in support in that independent authority task with the confusion. Our contribution here is to ensure that there are no loopholes in the bill that would engage. Number three, clause ten, outline the processes for the appointment of the section panel of the board. We submit these processes must be handled by parliament and not left only the section panel of the appointment by the minister. For a more open and accountable process, parliament is not be suitable institution to conduct the selection process for the appointment of the board members, not selection panel appointed by the minister. Clause twenty-five two of the bill provides that board can only make a determination on whether or not municipality ought to be categorized as a category as municipality after consultation with M E C and minister. This is leave decision about such in parliament issue only in politics. This is leave decision about the important issue only politicians. We want to argue that there, there must be perma, perma requirement of the constitution with a civil society and community structure before the decision of the nature in made. Further, for determination of the state, status of the municipality, the bills provide that when the termine is mine as a ward category, a municipality falls, that determination can be received only after ten years. This is too long, this is too long, it's too long period and instead include the number of, of the years, the board ought to be empowered to revise that status as a municipality based on number of the verifiable factors. Include the key performance indicators for the certain category of municipalities. Number seven, on clause seven, which makes twenty-seven, which make provision of the consultation of the determining of municipality boundaries. We submit that there is provisions for, for the real engagement of submission of the members of the community. Limiting the form of the submission to martial writing forms may exclude a large member of our people. Clause five of the bill must be not only consulted the number of the voters per ward. Parliamentary is contest of rural areas where the population is biased. Clamping villages that, that are far apart from each, each other into single wards hinders representation or and delivery of the services.
Greetings to you Chairperson. Greetings to members of parliament. Greetings to the public. My name is Ndombi Machigiza. From Ward Thirty. I am here to say, to represent the ward and say we support the demarcation. The reasons why we accepted or supported. The problem is we do not receive services because of the size of the ward.
Two, you what, in a areas as fourteen.
There are forty wards in the area.
Asna's police stations.
We do not have police stations. And that causes. Schools are far and halls are far from each area.
See now only one high school and two primary schools for other areas.
And then now that means. And then now that means other kids must be taken to M Tansani for schooling. Asna, we do not have clinics? Then we find that there's too much pressure and lacking for service delivery. Thank you. We have tried to give you the opportunity. We taken some few from the back. Thank you for taking your time to be here. Thank you for taking part in this process. The proposed bill? It is supposed to be a response to all the concerns that you have raised here. As I have mentioned before, this is because of the nineteen ninety-eight bill that. Which we are using now. In other words, you are adding on why this should be changed. Secondly, the fact that you are saying you were not noticed in good time? Processes for making bills and laws? Like we have done here, we are now? After we have gathered all opinions and views around the country? We will then go back to parliament? After we as the committee have had meetings and discussions? And then we will table your views and opinions in parliament? And have discussions? If a number of people says this should be passed? We have a section that is called the N C O P. And then the N C O P will discuss this again. As you have mentioned that when we have gathered all information, we must come back to you? N C O P will come back to you with the feedback. Like you have done now. By then, you would have all gathered your thoughts. You wouldn't, you are not going to say this was urgent. Like I have said before, gather your thoughts, then make submissions. As the members of the committee, we thank you. Thank you to the National Traditional House of Leaders. Thank you to the councillors that I may have not mentioned. And everyone else who is here, who is responsible for their communities. It was a pleasure to be here with you. Tomorrow, in Tuca Becha. Thank you. We are closing the meeting.